Done.
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Anything excuse? Need a motion to go to public hearing.
So moved.
Motion go second.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
So I remember, remind everybody that we'll talk about public, you know, public hearings stays on their subject and something else. All right, on the public hearing.
So this is the budget statement. Per new state law, the House filed seven eighteen, we have to keep this meeting open for a minimum of fifteen minutes and cannot talk about any other city business minus this.
Okay. So why don't we just go over it line by line?
Oh my god, Derek.
So what we're looking at. The largest. So we were at ninety-nine million last year.
Correct.
Yep. And the next year's will be hundred and seven.
A taxable evaluation, yes. That's how much the cities worth.
But that's not our budget.
No.
Okay. Jesus, the cops.
Then you'll see an increase in our general funds along with the IFRS and the FICA. That is all in part due since we now have a full-time librarian getting benefits and our new public works member getting benefits. That's where those increases come from. There's benefits for those guys. That's why you'll see down there that city regular tax rate. Last year it was twelve point four-four, this year it's twelve point four-two. That is where you're seeing your tax rate going down by point oh-two.
Okay, so what's a minimum mean there? Where it says it's eleven fifty-three. Says budget year effective property tax.
Middle column.
Yeah. What's our middle column? Where you said our tax rate run from twelve?
That would be the rate before the debt, the debt levy.
Okay.
Earn included.
Okay.
That's what the final one, the twelve point. Other than that, during the fifteen minutes, you're welcome to talk about anything else minus the business.
Can you talk about like, yeah, we'll win this basket money?
You can't actually.
Brandon, do you know what the breakdown is on taxes? How much we get compared to the school or county? Used to be the school got a little more than we did.
I don't have that in front of me. I just haven't had a little time.
It gets said in that letter.
Yeah, it's all, it's all broken now. I haven't looked at it, but.
I think that letter you got hit your house. It broke it down. But maybe not. I could be crazy, but I was trying to break the code on that letter now. I was struggling.
Doesn't help when the instructions are on the back of it.
What time is it on the round plate?
Seven.
It is a good question though. What percentage? Yeah, of your property tax goes to the city, it goes to the county, it goes to the school board? Because the county gets some of that money too, right?
Fifty cents for test control.
Fifty dollars.
The last time I looked at it, they.
Oh. We don't have.
Yeah, sometimes it.
It says twenty-eight oh-five.
There's a whole bunch. I haven't really figured that out. Looked at it for probably ten years. Cause I always thought that was, you know, people blame us for.
Yeah.
Their taxes and here the school was at that time anyway getting a little more than we were. Which is about a third of these.
Looks like their rate is seventeen point seventeen. This school board is? It's a school rate.
So the school's significant.
That's for FY twenty-four. Seventeen point one-seven.
And what's the city?
Twelve point four-two.
Twelve. What was, what was the number in the interesting there?
Twelve point four-two next year.
Twelve point four-two. So that comes out to be thirty-ish. Where is the other there seventy percent?
Well, that's just the rate.
These are rates.
Oh, rates.
Not so much. I don't know, but.
Got it.
Tax.
Yeah. Yeah. You're looking for pie chart, right?
Yeah.
So that's what needs a pie chart, where you get that correctly slipper and see your evidence report or something.
People complain about their property tax and send them to the school.
That's school board meeting here. That's that one.
Well, I can tell you this, if you don't fill out your check correctly and you mail it to the treasurer's office, they will send it back to you.
Oh.
Cause I just got mine back in the mail. Probably the mistake every two days. I had the number written correctly in the little box.
Oh, yeah.
But when I wrote it out longhand.
Yeah, I've done that once before.
And I left out, you know, like the forty-three dollar whatever. It got sent back to me. Do-over.
Yeah.
Okay, so I filled out another check and throw that back with that time. I think. I'm gonna send back here. Just want, I still got, I still got five days.
That's a bad thing. If I fill out the bills just before going to bed.
Your words don't match your numbers?
Yeah, I did that once with the insurance here a year ago.
So according to Lynn County, the schools get thirty-eight point nine percent of all property taxes. Cities get seven point six, oh no, sorry, six point seven. According to their last pie chart that they did for Lynn County.
So the tax base for the city of Lisbon is just the people that live in the city limits correct? Whatever the aggregate total is that everybody in the city limits, the city of Lisbon gets six point, what'd you say, six point seven?
Yeah, percent of them.
There you go.
Did you find one?
You're twenty-one, right? Hold true?
Yeah.
So here's yours. Must have been for the post office. How would you have known that? Twenty-three, twenty-four. It's home, you know? Okay, forty-six percent. To the school board, thirty-three percent for the city. Curve the community college.
College.
Yeah.
Which I cut. All the community colleges in Iowa have a board of regents. Guess not.
Let me see if she calm down. I wanna have a holster in your car.
One fifty-five was for you?
Yep. We have to assess there's what figure the treasurer's. It's true.
Yeah, so it's, percentage should all be the same.
What's that?
Shouldn't. Percentage.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Everybody's town's percentage.
Yeah, you're, yeah, forty-six point oh-four is for the school district, thirty-three percent. County's fifty-three ninety-seven, curve with three point seven four. Get the accessory to the AI office in the state.
Wonder whether it be if I can still work from out there.
A lot.
Is that breakdown different for like a commercial property, do they bring?
Same thing.
Do we have any, in the city of the message there any land that would be considered ag?
No. Red line did.
Do it, do it doesn't say ag, I guess, look.
Behind you.
I think, uh.
Over my tacos, yeah.
Yeah, I would think so.
Waters?
Yeah, I was thinking waters is what I was. Kepler's, yeah, Kepler's field.
Yeah, both of those are. Behind like Black Mills, probably Roosevelt. Yeah, so there Longwood to the east. And then back to Dead End Roosevelt, uh, Parolix, up on the hill. What's the brown said about?
Brown is public and yellow is invested.
Did you see that Kepler house between Lisbon and Berlin? Did you see what happened there?
I think the thought is.
That's sold and all.
We have enough.
That's the future. This, so the real, that'd be a different plan. That's the comprehensive land, this is the current.
That one's pretty good. He was agreeable to the price of the building.
That's the brown. Yeah.
It should be a straight line.
I saw that come across for our system on the system.
Cause when they get.
They're trying to try that one very often.
They made, uh, if you extend. Wallet. That's kind of a line, a line between.
I can't see.
My place and the school.
It's got the. Pictures underneath it, it's hard to see.
Yeah.
Need a motion without public hearing. Have a motion go second. Kevin?
John.
Motion. Motion without public hearing.
Hold on. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.
Here.
Done.
Yep.
Protestants to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to set agenda. We'll move the motion go second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing, but this is the time and place for discussion items. Now, we're going to jump into the time then in three minutes each. Presentation by Joe, two-year-old Lynn County Solid Waste Agency.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, thanks for having me back. I know I'm keeping everybody from the basketball game, so I'll be quick but thorough.
I got, I got my screen here.
Okay, there you go. So I'll jump right into it. Uh, ABC, our board, we still have our nine members, uh, six officials from the City of Cedar Rapids, we have two Lynn County supervisors, uh, Louis Sunbon, Ben Rogers, and then one point you from the city of Marion. I'll take you through what we have going on in our two locations, the landfill recycling location north of Marion on County Home Road and then compost and Mount Trashmore down in Chucky Village in Cedar Rapids. So jump right into what's going new for FY twenty-five, starting on July first. The tipping fee is going up a little bit. Right now, we're at forty-five dollars per ton and will be going up to forty-eight dollars per ton. And then the flat fees are staying the same for residents that come out there in a car, twelve dollars. SUV, mini man, crossover station wagon, it's fifteen dollar flat fee. And then pickups, full-size vans are twenty-two dollars. It's a reminder to remind everybody, unless you're coming out with, you know, eleven bags of garbage and a pickup truck, doesn't make sense. Use your curbside services, it's usually cheaper to buy those extra stickers unless you have a whole bunch to come out to us. Um, moving now to our compost location, um, yard waste, that's been going up a little bit as well. It's going up to thirty dollars per ton from the current twenty-eight. The minimum's staying the same, ten dollars per load. One change we have coming up on April first is we're no longer going to take yard waste out at our County Home Road location. For the last, uh, like eight years, we wanted to take a small residential loads out there, chug grass, uh, no branches thicker than four inches, leaves, that sort of thing. We no longer have our own grinder down at the compost facility. We're going out with contract services. It's no longer cost effective for us to have to haul everything from County Home Road down to there to do that, so we're phasing that out. Most communities, we don't have their own garbage drop off for the residents. We figure it should, everyone should be taken care of. So if you do have big loads, they need to go down with other commercial loads that are going down to the compost location. And then our commercial recycling is going up. This is for the people that bring us, uh, their commercial recycling, which is city of Marion, Red Sanitation, it picks up most smaller communities up north of us there, Central City and so forth. That's going up to a hundred and five dollars and that helps us offset the costs that we take when we, uh, take it down to the public services over in Ankle Side Drive and Southwest Cedar Rapids. And they charge us a little bit more than that, so we want to make sure people are continuing to recycle, so that's why we're subsidizing a little bit of that program. Other recycling services are staying the same, so a resident comes out and they have paper, plastic, cardboard, glass, no charge, you drop that off. Um, appliances are staying the same, ten dollars per unit, scrap metal, no charge. Uh, tires are going up a little bit. It's gonna be four dollars per tire, five if it's still on the rim. And that's just a passenger cost for us. There's basically one tire recycler in all of, in Iowa. And so when they tell us what the cost is, that's the cost we have to pass on to folks. And then batteries and medical sharps, again, no charge with those. That's always a big one for us because batteries are a huge issue. We have about two to three fires a week in the landfill from those lithium batteries that are in kids' toys. Once the builders go over top of them, they crack them open, ignites with the air. So our fire, that's their old job out there is keep an eye on those. So they take care of it, so we haven't any big fires, but it's a concern. So if you know anyone who has batteries, bring them on to us. TVs and monitors staying the same, fifteen per unit, no charge for all other electronics. And then household hazards materials are also staying, uh, no charge for residents, so paints, chemicals, stains, cleaners. And you'll have fertilizer from this time of year. We dumped the lawn garden. We take all of those for no charge whenever we're open. Two new programs that we've added since last time I was here, uh, book recycling. We've been getting requests for this for a long time. We finally found an outlet forum, so both hardcover and softcover books, people can drop off for free. And then our textile recycling is going full bore now. We partnered with a company called Thrift World. They take new material, they try to sell what we send to them, what they can't sell in their stores or online. Then it's shipped over to the all the countries in the third world where people can wear the material. So keep a lot of clothing out of the landfill of that. Uh, so for our compost facility, we now have compost available for residents down at twenty-two fifty A Street Southwest for Lynn County residents, no charge. You know, you come, you have people that come out there with just one five-dollar bucket, we have people that come with a dump trailer, we'll fill you up, no charge for that. And then the community, if Lisbon needs anything for any big project you have going on here, let us know. We'll make that available for you. And then also wood shifts too. We have good double ground wood shifts that look good for landscaping. Uh, those are free for most residents standing new if you want them. Trashmore trails will be open enough, weather permitting, pretty soon here in April, as long as the trails aren't too soft. We had some flash openings both this month and back in February. We got into the seventies, had a lot of hundreds of people showing up in those days. So if you ever been out Mount Trashmore, encourage you to check it out. Pretty incredible view. And then moving on to, uh, four twenty-four, this is the waste planning. Talked to you a little bit about this last year, going through the process. We know that the landfill is going to close June thirtieth, twenty forty-four, twenty years. Uh, we have to cease operations at the County Home Road location per our settlement agreement with the city of Marion. We reached out to them a couple of years ago, asked them if they considered to amend the settlement agreement, allow us to expand that location, because there technically is space there. Our agreement with them says we have to have the eighteen-hundred foot setback from the southern border. D and R regulations say it has to be five hundred feet, so we could use that extra thirteen-hundred feet, that'd be twenty-five to thirty-eight years of landfill space. They said no, we're gonna stick to the settlement agreement, which is their right. So we're going through that process because we know that come July first, twenty forty-four, there's still gonna be six to seven hundred tons of garbage that has to go somewhere. We're now in a position where we're currently gonna be full well before then. If, uh, nothing changes, the landfill is gonna be full in twenty thirty-six. So knowing that and, uh, looking at different things, we've been going through this process that we call four twenty-four, looking, how do we address things like organics management, which are more than twenty percent of the waste stream we have here? How do we utilize our current facilities to the best and highest use while we have it? And the booking of alternative technologies, that was the process our board went through last year, looked a lot of different things. And there are alternatives to land building. Uh, things like state-of-the-art incinerators, which they use in the Twin Cities area. I think I told you this last year, we looked at how much that was gonna cost and it was one billion dollars. And we don't generate enough waste here in Lynn County to make that worthwhile. We'd actually have to import all the other ways from Iowa, plus draw some in from Minnesota, because you have to run those twenty-four seven to make the cost effective. So that wouldn't work. Mixed waste processing, where you open up every bag of garbage and pull out all the bins that people didn't recycle or could have been composted, but every time you do that, the cost goes up. You know, that'd be instead of being, you know, forty-five dollars a ton, you're talking about a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy-five dollars a ton, something like that. So what we've been looking at with all of the different things is most likely operating as a transfer station when the landfill gets full before twenty forty-four. Which we basically already are, our transfer station when it comes to all the recycling, all the different things that we take inside a research recovery building, those are like, we're just the middleman. That gets dropped off to us, you know, either goes to Republic for sorting, uh, the batteries go to one place, the hazardous materials go to another, that sort of thing. So we would basically do the same thing with the garbage in the meantime. So garbage would still come to that location, except that we put it onto a semi and then we take it out to a landfill or another location that would be for final disposal. So that wouldn't work until twenty forty-four and then at which point we'd have to find other locations. Our board has said that there's not gonna be another landfill in Lynn County. There's just no parcels of land left. There's so many zoning restrictions. And with, uh, the CR sixty-five cooperating from the farm ground that you can use for it, so kind of stuck with that. So a transfer will definitely be playing a role in the future. The board's looking at different spots where we can site those, maybe a southern one for, you know, people on Southwest side of Cedar Rapids where there's a lot of industry and communities on that side. And then a northern transfer station to deal, you know, for, uh, Walker, Coggin, and those communities as well. So we're going through that process. But in the meantime, what's this mean for Lisbon and the rest of Lynn County? We're still here, we're still open, still operating all these services and programs. And we'll, as we go through this process, we'll make sure that you're aware of what's going on. And I know it sounds like a broken record coming here each year, but you know, the tipping fee, it's gonna go up a little bit each year. Because even when transfer is the next cheapest option after land building, but if you want to keep all the services and programs that be subsidized and do the same things apples to apples, typically it will likely be double what it is right now. So instead of being forty-five dollars a ton, you can do ninety or a hundred to do all the, all the different things. So we're gonna go up incrementally over the years ahead here, just so that when that change finally does happen. We're not, I'm not here one year saying, yeah, it's fifty dollars a ton, landfill goes away, and that should be transferred, A, it's a hundred dollars per ton, and nobody's prepared for that. So it's gonna go up a little bit each year. But in the meantime, like I said, we're still here, still open, and if there's anything that we can't do for Lisbon, we'll try and do it.
Questions, Joe? So the appliances, like I'm, I'm on my bar right now.
Yeah.
I can get rid of all my appliances. So I can recycle up there for ten dollars?
Ten per unit. So that's, and that's like big, you know, double door refrigerator is ten dollars, little microwave is ten dollars because of the house phone. Yep.
Any questions? Thanks, Joe.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Secretary G I S presentation.
All right, Christine's gonna pull this up. Um, we purchased this, um, last year. We've been working with Marsha to get everything up to date. You can put this, pull it right up on your phone as well, but, um, it's gonna be on the website, as you can see there. There is a link on the website. Uh, the cemetery G I S map, I think the top of there. All right, so it's really user-friendly. Uh, the legend up there, it's color-coded. It tells you, uh, what lots are, um, available. What's occupied, which is in red. The orange is what's sold. Green is available for sale and then the purple is what we are not selling. So in that bar at the top, uh, you can go in there and you can just search by last name. Uh, so I think we, if you wanna type in O'Connor. That'll pull up, uh. The grave for them. And then you can click on that, it has a picture and you can go right to the stone.
Oh, that just pulled up the first Hugh O'Connor.
Okay, I'll put it to it. So if there's something there, there's a picture. And all the little icons show you a picture, um, of what's there. Obviously, everybody's not gonna have access to the website or know how to get there. So also on the website is a QR code. And I'm looking to put those on all the signs, or put a sign at each entrance, so somebody can go in with their phone and they can just click on it and then you can go right into there and navigate through. I think it's gonna be beneficial for people coming to visit, uh, where their loved ones are, as well as people looking for lots. So, uh, Marsha's done a lot of work with this. Um, she's spent a lot of time out there. Everything to our knowledge is a hundred percent accurate. So, um, she had a list of, I don't know, what was it, Christine, fifty or so that she had to go find, but, uh. Everything's out there. Pretty neat deal. Uh, we can continue to add, so as time goes on, if you want to see obituaries or anything in there, we can, we can upload those over time. This is really, you know, obviously a lot, a lot of work's been done. Um, there, we're using this with the G I S, um, equipment, which helps us find the pins. So anyway, there's been a lot of work going into this and I just thought, um, I would tell you it's gonna be on the website and we'll get it advertised on Facebook and hopefully before tomorrow day, we can get the signs out there where people can use the QR code on their phone.
I think, I think it's a great idea. We've been talking about this for years and I'm glad that we finally got it started and done pretty much. But I mean, it's, I don't know, how many communities have stuff like this, but that's pretty, pretty neat, I think.
That's gonna be my comment. I don't know if there's any. If you don't have a guy that knows the cemetery, you're pretty much flying by your seat in the pants.
I know, we've, we've been talking about this for a while. And the guys just started on the council and we started adding those.
I know Marsha that put a ton of work.
Yeah, I appreciate all the work the city employees did for this and stuff.
Yeah, public purse did a lot too, or just verifying.
I don't know. So like that sheet that you just, could we like get some kind of like, uh, the history center to them, just, you know, that way?
Yeah, well, I think we're gonna try to, there's that monument case. I think we're gonna try to blow, blow it up there. Also with the QR codes, then they can interact with that, because, you know, right now, if you look on it, when it's blown up, it just gives the lot numbers and such. Now maybe somebody has their paperwork that they can go out and find where it's at, but. But yeah, we're just going to put the map up there so that at least people knew general idea where things are, it's color coded, so they'll be able to see what's open and what's.
I know, and that's something, you know, also we, like we can, Wednesday we'll talk to the school about it. I mean, that's, you know, some of those, the younger kids are learning their genealogy a lot younger. But you know, it's something that they, you know, do class field trip on something out there or something. Resolution oh eight, twenty twenty-four, proven budget statement fiscal year twenty-five.
So this is what we had the meeting for earlier. Regular property tax, one million three fifty-three, nine forty-six, and the tax rate at twelve point four two five one seven, which is a decrease of point oh two.
So our tax on cities' permission has went down.
The asking percent has gone down.
Need a motion to approve it. Some of the motion are second. Second. Kevin.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Aye.
Set public hearing for first fiscal year twenty-five budget for April eighth, twenty twenty-four.
So this will be the next step. Just need a motion, a second to do that.
Motion for that. Some of the motion are second.
Aye.
On favor.
Aye.
Public hearing for changes to chapter ninety-two water rates fees. Motion for public hearing. So, a second. Okay, we're in public hearing.
All right, this is.
On favor.
Thank you.
So this is our water rate increase. I've talked to Maggie at Spear Financial and this is based on our bonds and our debt service. She's requesting a two percent increase starting June or July one.
Any questions?
No, and then also I put in here too, the minimum, or I'm sorry, the, yeah. The minimum's obviously increased for several times we've done this, but the deposit's always been a hundred dollars. As a general rule, they like you to have three months worth of minimum payments on the deposit. So we're asking that the deposit be raised from one hundred to one fifty as well starting July.
So do we have to change the ordinance though?
That's, yeah, that's what this.
Any questions?
Yeah, we'll go out of public hearing, then we'll approve the first reading.
New motion, go public hearing.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
First reading of ordinance oh one, twenty twenty-four, changed to chapter ninety-two. As O'Brien just talked about.
So this will be the first reading, we'll have three of these. Just need a motion, a second, if you see fit.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve, a second.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Both.
I need roll call for ordinances.
Kevin.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Public hearing for changes to chapter ninety-nine sewer rates. You have a motion to go public hearing?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
All right, so this is for the sewer rates. This will be a three percent increase. Again, this is after talking to Maggie at Spear Financial, based on our debt service and our timeline for paying was off.
Need a motion to go public hearing?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
First reading of ordinance oh two, twenty twenty-four sewer rates. Need a motion?
So moved.
To approve. Do you motion approved on a second?
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Public hearing for changes to chapter forty-seven park and rec use fees.
All right.
Nope, I didn't go in first.
Sorry.
You have a motion to go public hearing?
So moved.
A second. On favor.
Aye.
All right, so we'll go through these ordinancees from time to time. We've come across this type of thing. And in this particular instance, our current ordinance advises the park and rec board, they make the vote to increase park realm. So the amounts are in there. The board has voted to increase the amount slightly. So basically what this is doing is just removing the amounts from the ordinance, since they determined the rates anyway. Just doesn't make sense to have it here if they're able to change them. So it's more of a housekeeping change than anything.
So they generally charge Mike forty dollars, then they charge Mike fifty?
No, they haven't set, they just set the rate.
It'll be passed by resolution in the future versus having to do three readings and then ordinance change.
Any questions? Need a motion to go public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
First reading of ordinance oh three, twenty twenty-four park and rec use fees. No motion?
So moved.
A motion, a second.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Kevin. Public hearing for changes to chapter seventy-eight permits. Need a motion to go public hearing? Need a motion to go public hearing?
So moved.
A second. On favor.
Aye.
So this one here, another housekeeping thing. There's going to be no rate changes for the golf cart permits, but what we're doing is taking the amount out of there and make it set by resolution. Just as Christina said, in the future, we can just pass this as a resolution by council instead of having to go in for three readings just to make that change.
Any questions?
I guess I've got a question on the golf cart permit. You have to be a certain age driving that?
Yep.
And that's normal driving age?
I believe it's eighteen. Eighteen, correct?
I believe so.
Eighteen, so you got two years over your, when you can get your license, you have to wait two years for driving golf cart.
I've just made it personally, but I was just curious.
Yep.
Did you scale up?
Any other questions? Need a motion to go public hearing?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
First reading of ordinance oh four, twenty twenty-four golf cart permits. No motion?
So moved.
A motion, a second.
Second.
Kevin.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
We're responding. Assistant engineer board.
I'm unusual, the green screen camp. Kind of been the field engineer for the watering project, going well. Weather's kind of kicking us back probably in a week. So it'll be second week of April before the Washington main intersection's finished up. And then I think there's some odds and ends to take care of just water main lines across town. Nothing to close roads or tear on any bacon, so. And then business thirty, we should have plans finished up here this week. Start looking at cost estimates for resurfacing it. Still in the works, that's kind of why I was a little late, talking to the cat tech, so. Plans to do so over the weekend, so.
So when we do business thirty, are we looking at doing our streets too?
Uh, Washington.
Well, we got to pen it first.
We got to do the pin for the slabs.
Yeah. You got to do what?
Pin them, the slabs that are on the concrete, so like between Main Street and thirty. Those concrete slabs, they'll pin those together so they all move as one.
They're all moving. Just not as one.
Does this year look better as far as getting affordable a bit too?
Yes, in terms of roadwork, yeah. Yeah, I've seen it tie down across most towns, so if people are hungry for it.
Business thirty, what's the width, is there going to be like a bike lane incorporated in that or not?
No, we're looking to just fully resurface it. Basically take the first four inches off, the four inches back on. No, I think what we're considering, given what the estimate ends up being, we're going to look at maybe putting edge makeshifts right on. That's what the county did coming into town.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I don't think, yeah, the county did coming into town like that. But I would call it bank lane, but.
Shouldering, yeah.
Yeah, shouldering.
Just give it a good two inch back.
Shoulder or whatever.
Any questions? Thank you. Public board.
Just kind of piggybacking what Hunter talked about. They have started filling some of the settling with there. Obviously, the moisture we got slowed that up there and continue with that as soon as, you know, weather allows it. We did get the fence up around one of the barns. So hopefully that's, that's to what you guys were talking about at the last meeting, what you were looking for. And then we're going to get started doing leaves here, hopefully tomorrow.
Do, do we need the fence to both those barns?
Yeah, we're just having issues finding spell fence, so. They went into town and bought everything, added it and they had, so.
If we got more on order, they just don't know when it's going to come. So we picked the worst one and did that one.
Do you need to, Travis? Person rep.
Um, I'm planning, weather pending, to start soccer on Thursday. I have my coaches meeting tomorrow, so hopefully we're able to get outside. So just hopefully everybody keeps in mind that there's going to be hundreds of kids running around at the park on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We have our Easter egg hunt this Saturday at eleven thirty at the city park for any kids that want to come out and hunt for eggs. And then the last thing I have is we have our spring cleanup will be April sixth. It's a Saturday at nine AM. That's where we pick up sticks, leaves, garbage, everything at the parks, all the bald diamonds in the park area. So anybody that's wanting to help out with that, feel free to show up at nine AM that day.
Let me queue you for soccer.
We had about a hundred and thirty, which is a little bit lower than normal for spring. Usually, obviously with light football and soccer in the fall, that's our biggest one. But our numbers were a little bit down. I know that there's some competitive soccer leagues and things like that, so that's part of it. But we still have a really good turnout. So I've got twelve teams for pre-K, kindergarten first, three for second, third, and I've got one team of fourteen for fourth, fifth and sixth grade soccer.
I've got a question. There's a spring toy that's gone. I mean, it's got a color over it. Is that being repaired?
It is being replaced. That is part of, I'm working with, not a scout group, but it is a four H. I'm working with a four H group. They're helping us purchase another digger for that spot, so it will be put in there.
Is that what it was? I was saying it's on your road on.
No, it was just one of those hand diggers that the kids could use. So we have another one. They've applied for a grant, so assuming they get that, they're going to help us cover half the cost.
Great.
And that will get replaced, so.
Any questions for Greg? Library.
She had book club tonight, so no, no presents, no updates.
Okay, please permit.
Nothing beyond what's in the report?
Any more? Public hearing, any questions? Analysts?
Nothing thrown in today.
Fire chief.
Talked to Phil Fire, reference our grass truck. They're thinking of the middle of May, they'll be ready for that. We had our fundraiser out at Tin Roof last Saturday, very successful. So thank you to everybody that came out and for all the people who have donated money through the mailers. And all of us, we appreciate that. That's everything, Fire.
On the grass truck, so when you get your new one in, try to just get your old truck.
Right.
Yep. You got all the stuff that you need for that?
Yeah.
For flowers, are there any?
No, I mean, yes and no. We got.
But you, we got your form and stuff.
Yeah, we got the retros and stuff, so.
Any questions for fire chief? City administrator.
Met with Historic Preservation at their monthly meeting last week. A lot of discussion on the barns and I think it was very constructive and positive. So they are moving forward with getting the structural engineer out for O P R architects. It's going to be lazy dream the barns. I've been working with some different vendors to try to get some cost opinions rounding up for that May meeting. So making progress there. Reminder, we talked about earlier, joint school board meeting here, seven o'clock Wednesday night, this Wednesday. Talked to the contractor today. They're going to start when the weather is in the sixties for the week. They will start this lower window. All of the windows in city hall across the top have all been replaced and repaired. So the last one is this downstairs one and they're trying to save us some money since it's now going into the warm season to not have to build that internal wall to let the cold air in. So since we're close enough, I thought that was a benefit to us, save a little money. The supplies at the sports complex for the water sewer, storm sewer have all been ordered. So hopefully here in a couple of weeks, we can start going with that. As you noticed, Windstream has done some boring on Washington Street. I'm not happy with the amount of grass damage and lawn repairs that are going to need to be made by them, but I have walked it with one of the supervisors and I'm also going to be meeting Windstream this week to go on a walk with him to show them the areas that need to hit. So if you live along that road, I promise you it will be fixed and it will be as good if not better than when they found it. And next week, I believe it's Wednesday, Thursday, I'll be at the Iowa employment conference in Des Moines. Other than that, so I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, you said you talked with the historical committee, historical board. They're bringing in something to say that construction may be saved. If that guy, Senator Jones, says, yeah, we can do it, it can be done, it wouldn't cost us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm just making up numbers, I don't have any idea. But our insurance says we have that down by September. So if he says, if he says, you know, it can be done for two hundred, but we're, I mean, I'm just letting you guys think about this. What do they say, okay, we'll fundraise all that to give effects? Because there ain't no way to go get, unless they have somebody to relieve.
So I've, I've talked to Scott, this is a question that came up in the meeting. The insurance company has already spoken and ruled on the two buildings. So they either have, the sec, those two have to either be fixed or they have to come down by October. There's no, no wiggle room there. There is an option, let's say if you start making progress and it's determined that the two have to come down and you start making progress and show that the two have come down and you have a construction fence around the third one and you've made progress on it, there is an opportunity to ask for an extension on that one if you're saving up money or what have you. But I did ask, they, they made the question about an extension on the middle one and I talked to our agent and they said they're, they've already ruled that and they will not be extending that, so.
Okay, so dude, these are one of them, so one of them more. Does that one have to come down too according to insurance?
No, they, they said it's in need of repair. But it either needs to be repaired or it also has to come down. They all have to either be repaired or come down on, by, by October.
Is the second one in bad, bad?
Yeah.
Or is it the same quality as the third one in?
I would say the third one's better because the middle one has some, a supporting wall that's cracked that was mentioned by the structural engineer that's going to need to be repaired. And there's several floors in there that have holes and different things that are going to need to be repaired.
Well, my, my, my only concern is, and I understand the first one coming down, I don't have a problem with that, but, but once those come down, they're never going to back up. So if it's, if it's something that could be repaired, I think we, we should justify looking at repairing it if it's all possible. First, that's my feelings.
Yeah, it just has to be done by October.
Well, then we've got to find some people that want to look at it. And the house should probably be the best starting point, would be my guess. Since they've done their repair. since they've done the repairs on the bad one, right?
No.
They put the shingles on the one down by the road, isn't it?
No, these are all, these are all tuned, no, links reattached, they're just tacked out.
Okay.
There's been no...
And I understand that would get down, um, but I'm not sure that those other ones are in that situation, and once you tear those down, they're gone forever.
I'm just telling you, I'm sure, I'm just... You know, I, I agree with you, Mike, I'm, I'm all for historical stuff, I really am, but, I mean, what, what's historical about, and that besides they're gold? I mean, did Abraham Lincoln put his goat in there one day or whatever?
Might have.
I mean, what, I mean, there's a lot of historical stuff in the, in the city of Lisbon, you know, and we're, I'm not, I will personally veto anything that we spent a lot of money on. I'm not, well, I'm not spending a lot of money on these barns, 'cause I, I mean, it just doesn't make sense to save these barns for a whole lot of money, but we could use that money in other places that benefit the whole city.
Have we, have we exhausted the whole lot of money thing, do we know?
So we have a report, which I had sent out before from the Hooten Coyote, um, that was somewhere around the hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar range. That was before the prices went up, that was before the last windstorm. Historic Preservation's having the OPN architects come out, they're gonna laser it, and they're gonna basically give you a new report on what they feel needs done.
We certainly need to wait till that.
Yeah.
No, I agree with you.
Yeah, we, we have till May thirteenth for the last meeting to come up with this, and then, um, at the end of all this, the insurance companies request it at, once everything is fixed, or whatever gets fixed, that it gets re-inspected by a structural engineer before they'll cover it, so.
But, then, that has to all be done by October first.
On the building next to the road, in the middle building, October is the deadline for the insurance.
Well, they start tearing down that one next to the road tonight.
Well, that's, they motioned to have it for May, so we put a fence around it, 'cause it's in bad shape, and that could be the motion in May.
Okay, then I got another question, so we saved the one in the north, are we saving it to allow, I can, people go in it, or just to keep it standing?
So part of the insurance company, and this was a question that came up, structurally sound means to have people in, inside and around it. Because their thought is, you have to have coverage so that it's a park that's gonna attract people, and you have to assume somebody's going to get inside of it, whether you want them to or not, so they have to cover themselves by saying it's gotta be structurally sound to be in and around.
Okay. So the historical committee's got a structural engineer coming in, done with one, done with streets and, and cars?
Yep, they got a laser, and it's, uh, yeah, I believe they're coming, it's this week, I believe, John, is that correct?
I, I'm not sure, but, yeah, as soon as weather permits, they have time, they're supposed to be coming soon.
Do we have any idea how much that costs, have them come out to do that?
They have it already covered.
They have, they have a grant plus private donations.
They had a five thousand dollar grant, and then they had donors.
Any other questions? Any other questions, Brandon? Christina?
Gonna get started back up on the budget here, once you guys pass some of that stuff tonight, I don't know if it's about it or town.
Kevin?
Did that other, they had a good job on that surprise snowstorm because of, and a knuckle appointment that day, and a, well, it was white knuckle there, but I think that cut everybody, I think cut state up there too, but I came, when I came back, you guys were all plowing, so you did a quick, uh, did a quick audible there, I think, 'cause I don't think anybody thought we were gonna get that much, you know, but...
No, it was interesting.
Yeah, you know, good job, 'cause at eight-thirty or whatever, it was dicey, but by, you know, ten, it was, it was way better, good job.
John?
Friends in the Lisbon library normally do a trivia contest in April at the fundraiser. This year, we're not gonna do that with everything else going down, and last year, we only had four teams. Also, the, uh, Historic Preservation Commission had one resignation, so we need volunteers to fill that spot. Ann Opat's resigned, and thank you, Ann, for all the work you've done, it's been a lot, that's all I have.
And I also would like to thank Ann for the time that she put in doing that, I mean, I know, some people don't care about this stuff, some people do, I, I mean, it's, but I do appreciate all the hard work that they do for the historical stuff in Lisbon. Maybe if you wanna reach out to that one lady that was in here for that last meeting.
That's, like, your, she actually has her in for the tree nature park, so we'll have that next meeting, she just turned it in today, so.
And that's all I get, the hawks. They're down big right now.
What?
They're down big right now.
No, they're not. They're up by five points, nice try.